Good morning, everyone. Thank you for being here for the regular county council November twenty seventh nine thirty A M. Meeting, I would like to call the meeting to order at nine thirty A M. Just to pass along, we have a few absences this morning. Councillor Callahou and councillor Stasiak are currently attending the F C S S conference and councillor Kapitaniak sends her regrets. I'd like to start today with the land acknowledgement. We acknowledge Athabasca County is located on First Nations Treaty six and Treaty eight traditional territory. We respect and honor all First Nations, Métis and Inuit peoples' connection to these lands, their history, language and culture. Before we go forward with the approval of the agenda, I understand there are a few items to be added. One item is under nine point one, which is the divided highway speed limit survey from the transportation economic corridors. And we have two enclosed items, which would be twelve point four, section thirty, sub one, the A T I Act for economic interests of public body land. And item twelve point five, section twenty nine, sub one, for the A T I Act Advice from Officials. I think that's all unless anybody else has any additions or deletions. Move. Okay, so before we go to the motion, we'll give, we will go around the table for councillors to choose the items they wish to discuss. The items that I know that must be discussed are two point one, four point one, four point two, four point three, six point one, seven point one, seven point two, seven point six, seven point nine, seven point one, one, seven point one, two and seven point one, six, as well as eight point one, A, eight point two. And our last item, the closed session items, twelve point one through twelve point five. Are there any further? Please go ahead, councillor Deputy Reed Minz.
I'd like to put on seven point four. I don't know why, but seven point seven. You said seven nine?
Yes, seven nine, I said, yeah.
And seven eleven.
Seven, I'm sorry.
Seven eleven?
Yeah, that's there.
Oh, that's there already?
You bet.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Please go ahead, councillor Hall.
Seven point one, three.
Seven point three?
One, three.
Oh, pardon me. One, three. There we go. Are there any others? We're good to go. I'll run through these again if I may. All right, so we have two point one, four point one, four point two, four point three, six point one, seven point one, seven point two, seven point four, seven point six, seven point seven, seven point nine, seven point one, one, seven point one, two, seven point one, three, seven point one, six, eight point one, A, eight point two, nine point one, and all of our closed session items, twelve point one through twelve point five. If that's good to go, councillor Chamsik would like to approve the agenda as discussed. All those in favor? Any opposed? I see none, six and oh, thank you. Alrighty, we're speaking, being in our delegation doesn't begin until ten A M. We'll go forward to item six point one, which is on page sixty one of your agenda package, which is bylaw zero three, two, twenty twenty five land use bylaw amendment for South, North, East, three sixty five nineteen, West of the Four. And get there. All right, so we have a recommendation here from administration, Ms. Boucher, would. The recommendation here is to give first reading of bylaw zero three, two, twenty twenty five land use bylaw amendment for lot four, block one, plan zero three, two, six, zero, zero, six, from country residential C one district to recreation commercial C five district.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I see there was an error on bylaw thirty two, twenty twenty five. One point zero, A should read from country residential C R one district to recreation commercial C five district. We'll make sure to.
Okay, so that's in the recommendation portion?
C five? Yeah, it's in the recommendation is correct.
So the recommendation is correct to go from C one to C five?
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
Sorry, Madam Chair. The recommendation should be to campground, commercial, C five. Not recreation, commercial. So the recommended motion should be to give first reading of bylaw zero three, two, three, two, twenty twenty five land use bylaw amendment for lot one.
So in discussion three, you're talking about where the purpose of the recreation commercial C four should be C five? It's in number three. If I may, I, I guess when reading the plan of what looks to be on the property, is it a campground or is it more of a? I guess agritourism business?
My apologies, Madam Chair. It is residential, commercial, C four, not campground, commercial. So the recommended motion is correct. Should be residential, commercial, C four district.
Okay, so we're going from C R one to C four?
Correct.
Okay. All right, so we got all that cleared up. Thank you. So I guess I'll just go ahead and read the recommendation with that correction. To give first reading of bylaw zero three, two, twenty twenty five land use bylaw amendment for lot four, block one, plan zero three, two, six, zero, zero, six, from country residential C R one district to recreation C four district. And then to direct administration to schedule and advertise the public hearing on January eighth, twenty twenty six at nine thirty A M. For bylaw zero three, two, twenty twenty five. Okay? Would administration like to discuss the background and the administrative report?
Madam Chair, thank you. So the application is proposing to develop an ecotourism, an agri tourism business on site. And the current land use designation of country residential does not allow for that use on site, which is why we're bringing forward a recommendation to amend the land use bylaw to rezone it. The purpose of the residential commercial district is to provide a specific area where tourism and recreation use may take place in the country, in the county. And if council agrees, we'll prepare the necessary paperwork for the public hearing, which will provide landowner, adjacent landowner notices and advertise in the local paper for the public hearing.
Thank you very much. Does council have any questions? Deputy Reed Minz?
I'll just, I'll move the recommended motion.
Okay. Are there any further? Okay. All right, so we will go ahead. Councillor Minz would like to give first reading, pardon me, Deputy Reed Minz would like to give first reading of bylaw zero three, two, twenty twenty five land use bylaw amendment for lot four, block one, plan zero three, two, six, zero, zero, six, from country residential C R one district to recreation commercial C four district. And to direct administration to schedule and advertise the public hearing on January eighth, twenty twenty six at nine thirty A M. For bylaw zero three, two, twenty twenty five. We're ready for the vote. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? I see none, six and oh. Thank you very much. And we will go to item seven point one, policy ninety one hundred, fire department equipment and services on page seventy two of your agenda package. And we have a recommendation here that council approves the revised policy ninety one hundred, fire department equipment and services as presented. And I see Chief Shalapai has joined us. Would you like to go ahead and discuss the background and the report?
Well, thank you, Madam Reeve. This is, as is noted in the report, the first of a few policies we have been forward regarding our mobile fire service fleet. As previously mentioned, currently we estimate we have roughly twenty seven million dollars in capital liabilities in terms of vehicles and equipment. And this policy is the first step in really helping us work on a good capital plan. We've, we have the draft fleet plan right now. But a lot of the metrics, the measurements of how the vehicle conditions is not arbitrary, but it's subjective. This gives us an objective measurement tool to actually allow us to properly build out that fleet plan. It also incorporates some maintenance requirements, which will help us extend that fleet plan as long as possible. Ultimately, we want to run an economical fleet here. We don't want to be replacing fire trucks for the sake of replacing them. There needs to be a rationale behind it. Because honestly, in the last five years, we've seen apparatus prices double, in some cases triple. A truck that was six hundred thousand dollars in twenty eighteen is now one point five. So this, this is a huge liability to the county. So we want to make sure that we have it right and that we're managing it well. And this is, this is the first piece of the pie when it comes to, or puzzle when it comes to that. It also, this policy also addresses two other kind of burning issues in the fire service, contribution or donations, contributions into the fire service. So currently, we, even last year, we had a vehicle donated into a fire hall. Well, that comes with maintenance requirements and costs. So managing donations, or at least capital donations is identified in here. And the last piece speaks to kind of the historical operation of the fire service. A lot of our fire halls previously were, it was the norm for the firefighters to have to fundraise to get their own equipment. So there's a lot of contributed assets in the county where our volunteers have done the work. They've done the casinos. They've, they've found the money to buy the apparatus. And what we've tried to do here is recognize those contributions as a lot of those pieces of equipment hit end of life now, and the county's taking over and replacing those assets. We're not expecting our volunteers to go back out and, and basically panhandle for equipment. We need to provide them the equipment. But as we start to replace the stuff, we want to make sure that we're recognizing those contributions. So what we've proposed here, based on, you know, we've done as best we can through the actual costing, a percentage of any revenue we get off the sales of these assets back to the fire services through the R and R accounts, which is the control accounts that we have here at the county. So it would stay within that fire district.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Does council have any? Go ahead, please, Deputy Reed Minz.
I guess just with the, you know, that we're taking over the equipment that was bought with R and R. And we're giving some money back to, to the fire departments, which is great, not a problem. There's mechanisms in there now that, that they they can't go ahead and buy other equipment just out of the blue that maybe doesn't need to be needed or something like that.
Through the chair to councillor Minz, absolutely. So when we pass policy nine, zero, zero, five, the membership policy, that's where we, with the implementation of paper call, that policy addressed the R and R accounts. And really, the intent of the R and R accounts now, number one, they can't, there's a mechanism they can't spend without a business case. And that's expenditures are meant to be an enhancement to the service. So really, the funds are not to go towards the basic needs, but actually an enhancement to. So if instead of having black paint, you want chrome on a truck, well, that would be something we could look at doing. That's kind of an off the cuff example, but there's, one department did. We provide basic rescue or struts for extrication. They want to buy a little more heavy duty ones. So it was an enhancement too, and we allowed them to do that. But we're being very cognizant of making sure that we're not having unexpected liabilities come in.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Yep. Anybody else? Go ahead, please, councillor Dala.
Does that affect a little bit of the firefighter's morale? When, when we, you know, we're kind of telling them that they can't do this, that they can't do that. You know, what, what did the firemen feel about it?
Through the chair to councillor Dehalek, so we've been engaging our volunteer services and actually giving the contribution back to them is, this is actually going to help with that morale piece. All the equipment that, that we're operating, whether it was through donation, is insured, registered, maintained by the county. So we've been putting the money into maintaining these assets for years and years and years. So the fear right now is as we're buying new trucks, what's going to happen to the old stuff? Is the money just going to go to general revenue and be gone? So by us putting some money back to them really helps build that morale and build that trust with the fire service. And then the other policy that's mentioned here that is important for council, and this is, it's more of a discussion for that policy, is a level of service. So in terms of, it really is council's discretion on what services the fire departments are providing. Unfortunately, because of the risk and liability to the county, the county does have to have some other finger on the pulse of what we're doing. Because uncontrolled, we have the potential to do something crazy like get into dive rescue, which no fire department in this province does dive rescue, but just because we have money, doesn't mean we should. There's, there's a reason why we don't do certain things. So it's a check and balance, and we engage our districts all along the way with this as well.
Okay, councillor Chamsik?
Yeah, I really feel that this really helps with morale. I mean, it's all the appreciation of the past. You know, definitely coming back forward towards those members and halls. I think all in all, it's a really well thought out policy, and I thank you very much for the time and effort put into this.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Alrighty, and I will also comment, thank you. This is a lot of work, and as we're doing the regionalization, it's huge. And to see these types of things coming forward that, as you mentioned, liability against the county is huge, and that's one of the definite, definitely one of the things that we need to always keep at our forefront. So thank you. Again, it is a lot of work and we really appreciate it. Does anybody have, want to go forward with recommended motion? Deputy Reed Minz would like to approve that, would, go ahead, yeah. Deputy Reed Minz would like that council approve revised policy ninety one hundred, the fire department equipment and services as presented. If we're all ready for the vote, all those in favor? Is there any opposed? Six and oh. Thank you so much. Thank you again. We have item seven point two coming up, which is clearing of undeveloped road allowance, southwest one and southeast two, sixty five nineteen, west of four, and northeast one and northeast two, sixty five nineteen, west of the fourth, on page eighty eight of your agenda package. I'll get there. And the recommendation here is that council approves the request for clearing the undeveloped road allowances. Would administration like to speak to the report?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of council. So as per our county policy, the application comes to council for consideration. The applicant has inquired about clearing the undeveloped road allowance to have a trail to the property northwest, one sixty five nineteen, west of the fourth. And if council agrees to the request, administration will work with the applicant to ensure the conditions of approval are met, which includes approvals from Alberta lands and forests as long, as well as Alberta environment and protected areas.
Thank you. Does anyone have any? Comments? I guess I would like to speak with regards to will the county be supervising the clearing of the property of the undeveloped road allowance? I guess more than anything is we have experienced unsupervised clearing before, which has caused some, some concern. So just wondering about that.
Madam Chair, there will be definitely an agreement or an approval in place with conditions, so we'll make sure that they are met and they are followed.
Okay. Is it during the process or after the process? I would hope, I guess I'm just concerned that if it's not during and following along, that there things can go awry fairly quickly. I'll also just add to that, the liability for creating a trail, would that fall back on Athabasca County? So if it's not only this landowner that's using this trail, it's on an undeveloped road allowance, which would maintain ownership to the county, where would the liability fall should something happen?
Madam Chair, members of council, the undeveloped road allowance, although they are the, under the crown for jurisdiction, they are the care and control and responsibility of the counties. So it, they are under our jurisdiction to make sure that they're taken care of and that I believe the liability would then fall to, with the county, which is why we make sure that they follow the policies for clearing.
Okay. I guess the liability for use after the fact opens it up to others as well, using that particular section. So I do have concerns about that. But does, is it, would any councillor like to put forward a motion? Councillor Chisen? Okay, councillor Chisen would like to put forward the recommended motion. Is there any further discussion? Please go ahead, Deputy Reed Minz.
Yeah, now that that point's been brought up, that's actually a very good point, because they're not asking to build, to build a road along there until they want to maybe develop it or something like that. But is there a chance that they could come back to us, or come back to the county and say, okay, I need, I need some, I need a hole filled? Like, like, is there a chance that they could come back there so I could gain access down here because it is now a trail? That actually brought up a very very good discussion just due to the fact that that, I never thought of it that way, that all of a sudden now we have a trail going in there. Is there a way that they can get us to, with gravel?
Madam Chair, yeah, we've got hundreds or perhaps into the thousands of miles of undeveloped road allowances that have trails on them in this county. They could ask us on every one of those. And I think it has to do with our policy on what level of service we provide on undeveloped road allowances. And are we adhering to the policy? And this area certainly needs more work. Beyond this, we know we've got lots of people that have built structures and cabins on undeveloped road allowances. This, this policy affects us administratively every week. So we intend to elevate that and make it a council issue and make it, we need some policy work done on this. And so, of course, anyone can ask at any time for the county to do something on an undeveloped road allowance or a developed road allowance. And we follow policy and assess them in accordance with the level of service policy, and we follow the act, which is, means we have duty of care and attention. So if we became aware of an imminent safety issue, we probably have a duty to act in so much as the policy tells us to. If it's not a safety issue, we may not. So every time it's an issue, yes.
No, that's good. It's a good conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, councillor Chisen would like to move that council approve the request to clear the undeveloped road allowance located between southwest one, sixty five nineteen, west of four, and southeast two, sixty five nineteen, west of four, and northwest, northwest one, sixty five nineteen, west of four, and northeast two, sixty five nineteen, west of four. We're ready for the vote. All those in favor? Two, three, four, and opposed? So that is five and one. Thank you. We're moving to item seven point four, Resource Management Partnership, Westlock, Barhead and Athabasca on page one hundred of your agenda package. The recommended motion here is to approve administration to sign the terms of reference as a partner of the Resource Management Partnership with Westlock County and Barhead County for access to additional A S B grant funding and increase Athabasca County's municipal contribution to nine thousand dollars per year to be in alignment with Westlock and Barhead. Go ahead, please, Deputy Reed Minz.
I would, I would like to move the motion forward. I'm a member on this, on this Alice board and, and they do, they do great conversation, conservation work. Helping the farming community and, and working together with three other municipalities. And I kind of was wondering why we paid less than, than, than that. And I would really want to thank, thank administration for bringing this forward and bumping us up, because I think it's a great program. And even, even yesterday in our Athabasca Watershed Council meeting, it was being discussed how Watershed Council and Alice worked together and, and all this. And it is, it is a great program. Kind of sounds like maybe Lackeybush County might be jumping on to Alice possibly, eh? So, so, so yeah, no, that's great work. Thank you very much for it.
Awesome. Thank you. Is anybody, go ahead, please, councillor Chisen.
Just a question. I mean, we've been paying the seventy five hundred for years. Now the increase, like, is there, I guess I don't know the history either, but is there, do we get a bigger bang for a buck if we increase or it just stays status quo?
Essentially, we're aligning with our partner municipalities in our contribution for it. Us, Westlock and Barhead are like kind of the big three in this group here. And as part of the new grant cycle, one of the conditions is we have a terms of reference or an agreement between the member municipalities. So in the resource management package there, it outlines our, I guess, our, our deliverables for the partnership. And these, having these spelled out are kind of much more than we've had in our last one, because there are different, and I guess more categories that we need to be active in. And basically, we're, this compared to our last cycle, we're doing a lot more, so.
Go ahead, please, councillor Dona.
Yeah, can you give us an, can you give me one or two examples of where we benefited?
For sure, yeah. So, so as part of the, the partnership here, we have access to, we have purchased as a group some rental equipment. So we have like a grain bag roller now. We have a plastic mulch applicator. We work with the group for our tree sale program, which is very popular. So like, we've, I think we've rolled in the neighborhood of two hundred, two hundred and fifty grain bags. So we're getting those out of bush lines and stuff like that and recycling them. We work with Clean Farms through the group as well. So that's like your, your plastic recycling. There's a, I think there's going to be a net wrap pilot project coming through. So as the group, we can work together to get kind of more for our ratepayers by using our, our leverage together. So like if we put nine thousand dollars in as a municipality, it'd be kind of a, we wouldn't be able to access as much of the funding or as much of the programming as we can together sort of thing, so.
How about the physical part of it? Say, say trees are disturbing the landscape. Are you involved in any of that?
Right, so our Alice coordinator, Lisa, has been with us for, I believe, about six or seven years. So through that Alice program she administers, so ratepayers in the county can submit a project for approval, and then they're eligible for up to fifty percent cost coverage of that program. So if there's a sensitive riparian area that's traditionally being farmed or just isn't being farmed because it's too frustrating sort of thing, we can renaturalize that, fence it out. The landowner gets a a rent payment for that to basically protect areas along creeks and stuff like that, enhancing water quality and animal habitat. And it's just basically giving incentive for people to have kind of protect areas that kind of should be. And if there's no incentive to it, a lot of people won't do it. So we have projects around creeks. We have offsite waters. We fence out creeks and stuff, just basically enhancing our, our environmental profile with that, so.
So, yeah, my, my concern is some, is the logging. So um, yeah, my my concern is some is the logging uh along some of the creeks, uh you might be familiar with it in the in the northeast part of the county, uh where they've logged right down to the to the creek uh bottom and uh uh I I don't know if there's an avenue where where you guys can stop that or or discuss that situation with them.
We can definitely, I guess, look into it, but ultimately the projects have to come from the landowner to us, like we're kind of not the logging police. Um, it's people who actively want to actively manage their land in a way that's more environmentally um sound, I guess, um and if they do care that, you know, there is habitat along the riparian areas and kind of, you know, places for the deer and for bank stabilization and water clarity, they can come to us and we can work with them, um we do advertise a fair bit, so it's kind of we're we've been around long enough where the words get out sort of thing. We're getting a lot more applicants in the last few years here, so it's definitely trending in the right direction, so.
So can a complaint be made by a by a a non-landowner or our neighboring uh?
It's not necessarily like a complaint-based policing program, but there's, I guess, Alberta Environment has restrictions on where you can log, I guess, for riparian areas and wetlands and stuff like that, so that would be more to the province, but we're basically looking for you know, active participants in protecting private land, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Go ahead, please, Counselor Chisen.
Um, for those members that are ASB members, um a lot of the time, especially our ASB conference coming up here in February, there's a lot of presentations and stuff that go more into the Clean Farms. These partnerships between all of us have been really good for the region, such as the grain bags and uh helping with uh environmental needs as well. So I think it's a really great idea personally, and I totally support this.
Thank you, are there any of them, pardon me, are there any other comments, questions? Okay, I think we're gonna get ready for the vote as we're coming up to our delegation. Uh Deputy Reeve Minz would like to approve um the administration to sign the terms of reference as a partner of the Resource Management Partnership with Westlock County and Barhead County for access to additional ASB grant funding and increase Athabasca County's municipal contribution to nine thousand dollars per year to be in alignment with Westlock and Barhead, for ready for the vote, all those in favor? Are there any opposed? No, six and oh, thank you very much, appreciate it. And we are at the point now, is our delegation ready to go? If we could just take a few minutes to uh bring our delegation in um and get settled, we'll just go into recess for three minutes.
Do you want to put your microphone on?
Thank you very much, sorry about that. Once again, good morning, thank you so much for being here to the Swerens family. Uh, we are at four point one, which is our delegation uh regarding S twenty-four dash zero thirty-three memorandum of agreement for northwest ten sixty-five eighteen west of the fourth. Um, I think um we'll start with introductions if we may, so I will begin on my right.
Rob Minz, uh, welcome, uh, Division Eight Baptiste Lake Island Lake Area. Bryn Hall elected in Division Four.
Kelly, oh, go ahead. Kelly Chanzik, Division Seven Grassland Atmore Presveda Areas.
Lucille, oh, Chisen, uh, Division Three Boyle Area.
Jack DeHolica, Division uh Sixty Outpack Wandering River Area.
Thank you very much, I'm Tracy Holland, Counselor for Division Five, which is east of Athabasca, Amber Amber Valley Parkview Packs and Areas, as well as some beautiful subdivisions down to more towards the south. Um, welcome and thank you so much for being here, and if you could please go ahead and introduce yourselves and then when you're finished, begin your presentation.
Good morning, I'm uh Donna Swerhun, I'm from Division Three.
David Swerhun from Division Three.
Thank you, and I really apologize, very rude of me, I did not introduce our administration. We have our coordination manager, Communications Manager Jordan Schenkelberg, our recording secretary, Ms. Leah Blair, our C A O, Mr. Bob Beck. Behind you, we have uh Christopher, our Director Wilkinson with Community and Protective Services. And we have Director Date, is it Dally, Dave Dally, thank you very much, with uh Finance. And we also have with the press, uh oh lordy, I'm going blank, Cole Cole Brennan, there we go, I got it, I'm sorry about that, please, go ahead.
Good morning, thank you for providing me with the time to present my concerns to our newly elected council. I would like to congratulate you. As a taxpayer and a resident of Athabasca County of more than thirty years, I feel that it's important that I have the opportunity to present my concerns to the representatives of the residents. The reason for my presentation is to request amendments to the memorandum of agreement between Athabasca County and myself regarding the subdivision application S twenty-four zero thirty-three, to ensure that both parties of the agreement are treated in a fair and equitable manner, which will protect myself as the landowner and will provide additional resources to the taxpayers of Athabasca County. One of the conditions for the subdivision approval of S twenty-four zero three-three is to develop a dedicated portion of the lands for the purposes of construction, constructing, extending or widening a public roadway or a ditch along the existing road known as Amis Road. The county requires a seventeen-foot road widening along both the western and eastern boundary of the existing road plan, eight-nine-six M C, which is labeled as Amis Road. Be advised that I am agreeable to this condition of the subdivision approval of S twenty-five uh twenty-four zero three-three, but would like revisions to the memorandum of agreement that ensures that as a landowner, that I'm shielded from the potential liability, provided with market value of the land that is required for the potential road widening and ensuring the taxpayers of Athabasca County are provided with additional resources. In the current memorandum of agreement, the county wants to place a cave caveat against the lands for the future road widening, which is labeled as the dedicated area. This agreement places limitations of use on the land with the landowner assuming all risks and liabilities without financial compensation or prior notification for access by county employees and or contractors. I feel this agreement is neither fair nor reasonable to me as a landowner. I feel that it's important that Athabasca County's memorandum of agreement must document and assume all liability of risk and use for the area that's known as the dedicated area in the memorandum of agreement or caveat to be placed on northwest ten sixty-five eighteen west of the fourth, including Athabasca County employees and or their contractors and or equipment when accessing and or working on the dedicated area. Reasonable written notice must be given, including a certificate of cert of insurance prior to entering and beginning any work or activity on the dedicated area. The conditions stated in the current memorandum of agreement provides the county the right of use or ownership without paying for the plans and or assuming any risk or liability, which is unacceptable as the current owners assume all liability without indemnification. The men memorandum of agreement must reflect my concerns of liability and notification prior to registering a caveat against this parcel of land. I feel that it's important that the quantity of land that is being assigned to the dedicated area needs to be clearly stated in the memorandum of agreement. I have contacted Don Wilson Survey to determine the quali quantities and they've provided me with appalling information. The seventeen-foot road widening along the eastern boundary less the road alignment of zero point one eight hectares is zero point zero eight five hectares or zero point two one acres. The seventeen-foot road widening along the entire western boundary of the existing road plan is zero point two zero four hectares or zero point five zero four hectares. The road alignment is zero point one eight nine hectares or zero point four six seven hectares. The quantity of land that Athabasca is requesting for the proposed dedicated area and road realignment is zero point four seven eight hectares or one point one eight one acres. It is important to acknowledge that the current memorandum of agreement establishes that Athabasca County will have the right of use as if they own the property without assuming any risk or a liability and without payment or indemnification until the road is developed. The memorandum of agreement and caveat register against the title limits land use by the owners, potentially affects land value and taxes the current owners for the land that has limited use. To ensure that this agreement is fair both to Athabasca County and the current landowners, I propose that Athabasca County should enter into a land exchange agreement with the current owners. Athabasca County will become the owners of the land described as the one point one eight one acres dedicated area within northwest ten sixty-five eighteen west of the fourth as stated in the memorandum of agreement in exchange for the one point one four acres that is legally known as four-nine-five M C nineteen R within the same quarter, northwest ten sixty-five eighteen west of the fourth to the current owners of the dedicated area. This exchange of land will ensure that taxpayers will own the land when the road is to be developed without losing any revenue for the purchase of the land. It will reduce administration and development costs. It will maintain access to an existing trail that is used by the residents of Amis Lake Estates in Pelican Beach and will provide the taxpayers of Athabasca with an annual revenue from the property tax from the area known as four-nine-five M C nineteen R. Athabasca County will also be receiving an additional zero point four acres at no cost to the taxpayer. The current owners will refund the monies paid for the road alignment to Athabasca County as the check was mailed without explanation of issuance. If Athabasca County is not prepared to enter into a land exchange agreement at this time, then I propose that the current owners are provided with a written agreement prior to the registration of the caveat and includes as a condition of the memorandum of agreement, which states that the owners of the dedicated area will be provided with two options for compensation for the dedicated area less the road alignment area specifically. Option one, the owners will be given the opportunity to enter into a land exchange for the dedicated area less the road alignment from four-nine-five M C nineteen R or four-nine-five M C eighteen R within northwest ten sixty-five eighteen west of the fourth. The quantity of the land to be exchanged is zero point seven-one acres or zero point two eight nine hectares. Option two, the owners will be compensated for the dedicated area less the road realignment at standard rate for the zero point seven one four acres or zero point two eight nine hectares that will be used for the road development from the dedicated area. Be advised that the municipal reserve nineteen R is an area which contains mature, popular trees that are potentially at the end of their life cycle. Many of these trees are hazardous as they've been blown down in windstorms, leaving rotting logs scattering the floor of the forest, leaning against other trees with broken tops or widowmakers that have the potential to fall, causing damage to property and or people. The area has become a potential fire hazard and liability. This land exchange would remove the liability and costs from the county with the new landowners assuming the costs and liability to remediate the situation. It will also provide the county with additional tax revenue for road maintenance and future road construction. I believe that the land exchange within the same quarter of northwest ten sixty-five eighteen west of the fourth is the best option as it is fair and equitable agreement for both parties, which eliminates liability and cost for Athabasca County, ensure that Athabasca County gains an additional zero point four acres at no cost to the taxpayer and receives additional annual property tax revenue. Thank you for your attention to this matter, I look forward to your decision.
Thank you very much.
Here are pictures of.
We have pictures of it. Trees falling.
Yeah, so you can pass them around. You can take a look at.
Appreciate this uh that you're bringing these forward and we will pass those around, does uh council have any uh comments, questions, uh they would like of our presenters, we have approximately three, three or so minutes left of the allotted time for the presentation. Okay. We'll continue, we'll look at the photos here and and get them by, um and once again, thank you very much for bringing this forward to us. We appreciate your presentation, the information you have provided and your proposals. Thank you. Awesome, thank you very much, and I know um council will be receiving this information uh into our library for uh further um consideration, so thank you so very much, appreciate you being here. We'll just give everybody a few moments. Um, we do have uh next coming up is our ten-thirty delegation, but um if we have a few minutes here. Pardon? Oh, okay, sorry, I thought maybe you might get getting my attention. Um, maybe if we can go on to seven point six before uh our next delegation. Seven point six is the G I S dashboards, which is on page one hundred. Seven point six is the G I S dashboards, which is on page one hundred seventeen of your agenda package. And I just wanted to mention in this particular one, will there be a presentation on this? C A O Beck, or is the presentation is in the package?
On seven six? It's in the package.
It's in the package. Perfect. Okay. So I'm sure.
Do we have more? Oh yeah, she's, she's gonna do an interactive thing using the actual website. So.
Okay. Do we have time to do that before our next press? Yeah, I'm just gonna ask that. Do we have time before our next allegation?
We only have eleven minutes. Do we have time to do it or would we be better off later? Okay.
Okay.
Let's move on to seven point seven.
Yep. Well, actually, I was just gonna say, maybe we can recess for everybody to take, take a moment for before our next allegation. So if ten minutes works for everyone, we'll return just before ten thirty. So ten twenty-nine to be seated.
Good morning, everyone. We are back from our recess. We are at four point two, which is our delegation from the Athabasca Landing Trails Steering Committee, Monoc to Perryville Trail. We will start with introductions of council and our admin. If we can start on my right, please.
Good morning. Rob Minz, Division Eight, Baptiste Lake Island Lake Area.
Good morning. Brian Hall, Council for Athabasca County and elected in Division Four.
Hallie Chamsak, Division Seven, Grassland at Moore Prospeeda Areas.
Lucille Chisen, Division Three, the Boyle L Scott Councilon Area.
Good morning. Jack DeHolic, Division Six, Alpak Wondery River Area.
And again, good morning and thank you so much for being here and welcome. I'm Tracy Holland, which is Division Five, Council for Division Five, which is east of Athabasca, reeve of the county. We also have with us our Communications Manager, Jordan Schenkelberg, our Recording Secretary, Ms. Leah Blair, our C A O, Mr. Bob Beck. Behind you, we have our press with Mr. Cole Brennan. And if you would also like to go ahead and introduce yourselves to everyone, that would be great.
Thank you for having us today. I'm Jason Pfeifer. I'm a consultant working on the project for the Athabasca Landing Trail. So we will introduce our delegation. We here have Gerald Rhodes as Executive Director of Alberta Trailnet. I don't know if you wanted to introduce yourself.
I, last time I sat at this table was three years ago in a different role with the Rural Miss Valleys of Alberta. So pleased to be here. Thanks.
And then beside me, I have Patrick Tai, and we will just allow him a minute as well. He's representing the Athabasca Landing Trails Steering Committee. And we'll just let him give a brief introduction to the Steering Committee as well.
Thank you. So I chair, currently chair the Steering Committee as well as Fred Wilton is a member of that Steering Committee and Alberta Trailnet as well. So just appreciate the beneficial mutual agreements and actions between the county and the Steering Committee. And hopefully moving forward, after we hear this discussion, there'll be more benefits.
Awesome. Thank you so very much. Appreciate it. Once again, thank you so much for being here and please go ahead.
And then sitting behind me, we have Fred Wilton, who's VP of Trail Development for Alberta Trailnet.
Work for the provincial government for the price of trail authority.
Fantastic. Thank you again for all being here and traveling in this weather today.
And that's, as I mentioned, I'm Jason Pfeifer. I have a firm named Pfeifer Design Associates, or P D A for short. And my, my client here today is Alberta Trailnet. They're supported by federal and provincial grant funding for this trail work that we're doing. This is also in association with the Athabasca Landing Trail Steering Committee. On the project, we have subconsultants as well. So we've got a transportation subconsultant, geotechnical subconsultant and environmental subconsultant, who's all had involvement in the work that is before you and that we're providing a summary of today. We go over a little bit of a project scope introduction. So the Athabasca Landing Trail, the section under study is roughly between Minook and Perryville. And it's four and a half kilometers in length. And our scope was to study the existing trail conditions that are there, engage landowners and the community on potential improvements and enhancements to the trail and propose improvements, explore options, and then carry out the detailed design, which I trust that you've all received as part of our council package. Bill, we'll just go through a little bit of a background of the trail before we get into and cover some more of the process. So the original landing trail was, was established in eighteen seventy-six and it was a road that connected Fort Saskatchewan to what was then Athabasca Landing. Today, the trail is part of the larger TransCanada Trail. And the, the segment which we studied is one of the least altered and natural segments of the corridor. Many other of the sections of the trail have been superseded by roads. We have a, a unique area of the trail under study. The Alberta Trailnet Society and the Athabasca Landing Trail was formed in nineteen eighty-nine and it's a not-for-profit charitable organization. It's governed, as we introduced, by the Steering Committee, which has representatives of the five municipalities along the trail and is also supported by regional trail groups, including the Athabasca Recreational Trails Association. In twenty twenty-four, in October, the five municipalities signed a memorandum of understanding and included scope to review and implement components of a two thousand and ten master plan for the trail, highlight key points of interest along the trail to collaborate on public consultation, planning, design, engineering and construction, construction and maintenance, and to collaborate and explore opportunities in tourism, recreation and economic development. One key thing to mention is each municipality should explore funding easements and approvals. We're a part of that agreement as well. So. A little bit about some of our current scope of work and work that we've undertaken to date. Our project startup was in May of two thousand and twenty-five this year and began with a site visit where we walked the trail south to north. At that time, data was gathered and base plans were prepared to evaluate potential options and improvements for the trail. When we did that, we used a GPS device to walk the trail. With that, we developed some uncertainty around the location of the trail relative to the nineteen oh nine road right-of-way that was registered for it, which, as you'll see in the schematic design report, influenced our knowledge at the time and the options we developed then. As we were working on those options, some of the opportunities we identified and considered for trail development, just gonna advance the slide there, were the addition of boardwalks to cross low-lying areas that experience seasonal wetness, no flowing water there that we saw, at least when we were there, to explore interpretation that would support the history and telling of the story of the trail. Currently, there's a minimum there that kind of celebrates and, and shows and tells the story of the history of the trail to add seating and rest points for people using the trail. Trail surface upgrades were considered as well. That might include more permanent surfacing like gravel that would increase accessibility and use of the trails. And as well, trailhead improvements. So place, places for parking as well as kiosks and some more interpretation at the trailheads were considered. In June of two thousand and twenty-five, we did the, we completed engagement, which began first with one-on-one conversations with the landowners who live along the trail and are stewards of the trail. It's important to acknowledge that the, the landowners there have been the primary stewards of the trail for many, many years and are deserving of a thank you for investing much time in clearing mowing and maintaining the trail. And without them, the trail would have, would probably not be there. It would have probably been overgrown and, and lost. Through those conversations, we also developed an understanding that there were opposition to significant trail upgrades. So there's a strong preference, a strong preference expressed to preserve the trail in its natural current state as much as possible. And things like benches, seating, waste receptacles and the parking areas were generally opposed. There were support for increased interpretation and celebration of the history and boardwalks at, at the water crossings and a desire to restrict the use of the trail to non-motorized uses. The trail is already authorized in that way. It is supposed to be a non-motorized trail, which we had heard is sometimes infringed upon by motorized uses. So and with anything moving forward, there was ongoing concerns around safety, privacy, the potential for, for fires and things to start in an area. privacy, the potential for, for fires and things to start in an area where that's a risk. And yeah, a desire for increased enforcement of the non-motorized, motorized uses. We also did community engagement, which included an, an in-person engagement where we booked the, the Monoc Community Hall. We had a reasonable turnout there of twenty-five people. And we issued digital and print surveys in June as well. Among the community, there was broader support for some more of those improvements for parking, interpretation, seating, and facilities. We also had a good conversation with one of the ancestors of Billy Ludet, who sure many people are somewhat familiar with his, an important story in the history of the trail as a, as a matey who worked for the Hudson's Bay Company and ran the trail to warn of an impending flood. So it's a very unique and significant story to the trail with indigenous significance. And this information is recommended to inform the future story and interpretation if and when trail improvements are implemented. Let's get my slide to advance here. There we go. I want to cover a little bit, tell a little bit more background in the schematic design that we developed. Early in the project, we mentioned the uncertainty around the alignment of the trail. So you'll see in the schematic design report, at that stage, we proposed two different options. One of them was to realign the trail wholly within the legal entitlement for the trail. Another was to, to fix the trail in its, what we understood as the existing location, which we thought was outside of the legal right of way and would have involved legal agreements with the landowners to fix the trail in its current location. One other key item to point out is on the northernmost quarter section of the trail, which is we call the nickel property based on the, the ownership. The nineteen oh nine road of right of way does not exist there. It was closed about twenty-five years ago. In its place, a caveat exists on that property that allows Athabasca County to enter the property for the rights to survey the location of the Athabasca Landing Trail and includes a sketch of an alignment on that property, which aligns with where the trail is today. This landowner, in our discussions with them, expressed a desire to move that alignment further away from their property. Where it exists today is quite close.
Sorry, when he says property, he means the house.
Yeah, the principal residence on the property is, is quite close. Because of the uncertainty around the legal title and entitlements and the alignment with the nineteen oh nine right of way, we did additional work to undertake a survey in October. And that survey gave us certainty around the location of the trail and identified that it is actually about ninety-five percent within the legal entitlement of the old nineteen oh nine right of way. So that gave us confidence in the detailed design, which, which you'll see around where the trail is legally. On the nickel property in the northernmost quarter section, where the landowner expressed a desire for realignment, we also explored an additional four further options. So we can see them on the slide above. From west to east, number one through four, if you can see it on the slides there. Number one is basically the existing alignment where it exists today and the alignment where the landowner expressed a desire to realign. We considered alignment number two, which goes through the trees and would have good quality of trail experience as most of the rest of the trail is through the trees, but would however require a high amount of vegetative clearing there. And alignment number three, which uses some of the pasture area of the nickel property, but also bisects the property as well. Alignment number four, as you can see, at the southern property boundary heads east and then along, north along undeveloped road allowance. This was the, this was the alignment that the landowner expressed a strong preference for. And this also went to the Steering Committee in October and was voted on and was supported by the Steering Committee. One important note to mention here, I don't know how legible it is on the screen, but towards the north of alignment four along the road allowance, there was one landowner that we weren't able to reach. We had heard that they're, one of, one of the partners in, in the, of those landowners had passed away. So we weren't able to engage them. And so I think an important note to make is that we did not receive any feedback on align, that alignment and any potential privacy concerns that that landowner, landowner might have. Just a few minutes here on the detailed design. So we advanced to the detailed design, which is completed recently. And the, what we're looking for today that the council could provide direction on is approvable, approval in principle for the road allowance and easement as it is drawn. It's in alignment with the options developed for alignment number four in the schematic design. Increases the distance from the private, from the private residence on the nickel property. The trail experience is maintained. We can use, by keeping this on the landowner's property, we can use an existing tree buffer. And we have future trail protection in the event that, of the development of the undeveloped road allowance. We have fencing along it for access control. And the landowner has indicated that they would consider this alignment. So council decisions and directions, Trailnet is seeking approval in principle for the alignment and easement as shown. And it would still have to be registered and negotiated with that landowner. The landowners, we have not had an opportunity yet to go back with this detailed design. So just one thing to flag is that have not seen this yet. And we also want to thank Athabasca County for project support, noting that we have Tracy and Kelly as well, representatives of the Steering Committee. Thank you for your time today and we look forward to answering any questions that you may have.
Awesome. Thank you very much. I know this has been a huge project and an undertaking that's gone for very many months. And I really appreciate the work that you put into this. It is so much appreciated. And I think I will mention again, the survey was so huge to be able to feel comfortable that we're within that nineteen oh nine original road plan, which is the original part of the trail. There is a little bump there and I believe if I'm not mistaken, the landowner would be okay with that little bump outside and staying on the same portion of the trail as it exists. Am I, is that still what you have understood as well?
Like to ask which, on which property are you?
I believe it was Commeres and Odison's was with a little bump that is outside of the trail. It's just a little jog, very small amount, if, if I'm not mistaken.
There are about like two or three sections in the detailed design where the trail goes outside of the property. So we have shown those realigned. But with the detailed design, we have not been able to go back to the landowners yet. But as a design decision, we, we just made that as a drawing and design decision as probably simpler in terms of, of the trail itself versus the other option would be needing to go back and discuss with the landowners and potentially register new easements or legal instruments on that property to realign that trail. It still could change, but for the purposes of detailed design, it's a decision that's been made, but we don't have a hundred percent answer on that yet.
Okay. Awesome. Okay. Thank you so much. Does council have any questions, comments that they'd like to put forth for our present? Please go ahead, Councilor Chams.
I just want to thank all the hard work that was put into this once again.
Yeah, thank you. It's fantastic. Go ahead, please, Councilor Hall.
So you said you're, you're looking for approval in principle from the county. Can you just help us understand why you need our approval for anything if, if this alignment is entirely within the, the nickel land base? Like you're not on county land. So what do you need? Why do you need us?
The, the easement or utility right of way would have to be registered with the county and negotiated between.
County's name, county be the easement holder.
That's right. Yeah.
And, and then in the, it's, I can't remember the, I can't see the slide number, but when you were looking at the alignment options. So the option is to move it farther away from one residence, but much closer to another residence who has not been consulted?
That's correct.
And is there a plan to talk to them?
We haven't been able to contact them with the information that we have. Contacting is them is something that we can do in the future with the alignment that we have developed because the, the legal entitlement does rest on the nickel property. Another option was considered where that alignment could go in the road allowance. So it's deliberately kept within the nickel property. There's legal entitlement for it to be there. And I think an opportunity with a tree stand along that road allowance to provide some privacy and, and, and quality in the trail experience to protect that landowner's privacy. But it is still something for sure. That's a task for the project as well to go and, and consult with that landlord.
Can I add to that? So at the north end, I don't know if you can hear me, at the north end, the, there's a, you'll see in the diagram, I don't know if it's in their package, but it shows a bit of a curve. And that's to incorporate as many of the trees as we could to create a visual sight break with the house that's on the, I guess it'd be the east side of the road allowance. So, so as opposed to hugging, it's a ten-meter easement, we actually go in a little bit there just to purposely create a tree stand separation with that property. So hopefully that helps. And as well, that's where a little bit of a node is for the trailhead, the parking is as well sort of thing. So we thought it was probably important to divert it a little bit to do that. So hopefully that. Yeah, I think there you go. Sorry, sorry. Exactly. Yeah. So we haven't, we needed to meet with you guys and present this. We haven't met with the Nichols yet on this. That would be the next step. And, and, and show them, show them this sort of thing, but we think this meets, meets the spirit and intent of what he has, his legal instrument that was in the county's name. And I can't remember, it's about five, six years old. It was done fairly recently that showed the old trail and that's what he roughly agreed to an easement for. Where was I going with this? So you already have an easement that says it, it was to basically go on the old trail. So you are doing him a big favor by considering this request and moving it to the other side of the corner. So we're hopeful that he's okay with this little deviation for some trees to create the same sort of separation he wanted from his house for the, the other neighbor on the other side of the road. We're hopeful he'll be good with that. Yeah, it's a caveat saying the spirit and intent that the easement will be entered at a later date once surveyed. Sorry, so.
Okay. I really appreciate that. And I also really appreciate the fact that the engagement that was done with the landowners as, as well as the public and that it's appreciated and, and people are respecting the fact that limited development happen and leave it to as natural state as it possibly can. And again, you know, the amount of work that the landowners have put in and continue to maintain the trail is so incredibly appreciated. It's beautiful. It's absolutely stunning. We walked it that day. When, when everybody came through and it is gorgeous in there. So that really needs to be understood and, and I'm glad that we're respecting the landowners themselves of what there was that they would like to see. Councilor Dalek, please.
Yeah. Any potential for, for gravel or other minerals on, on that trail or it hasn't been looked at?
We did consider trail upgrades that would have included widening or gravel surfacing on the trail. It didn't make it into the detailed design just because there was significant opposition from those trail upgrades with the, the landowners. And they are the stewards and maintainers of the trail. And I think there's a desire of the Steering Committee and Trailnet to maintain a, a good relationship of stewardship and maintenance along that trail.
Got you. What I was asking, is there any source of gravel in that area or minerals?
For extraction?
Yes, yes.
I'm not familiar with that.
Okay. Thank you so very much. And again, most of it, the nineteen oh nine road plan runs just, the road plan runs through private property on either side and then stops at the nickel property, which is the farthest northern piece of that particular trail. It's about four kilometers.
Yeah, but four, yeah, four and a half kilometers.
Four and a half kilometers through there. And then of course, the trail then exits to a road to, I can't remember the township on that one. And then you know where exactly where it is. So yeah, it comes in on a road, goes through the wildlife. Wildlife, the wild portion of it, the, the natural portion of it, and then back onto another road and, and carries on. So as our trail does, it travels road and some, some natural areas and back to road and et cetera. But again, I think, does anybody have any further comments? We will be bringing this back for discussion later on today in our agenda package. It will, of course, is live streamed as well and, and recorded. So you are welcome to stay if you like or check it out on YouTube, our big channel there. We call it the movie. So you're more than welcome to, to check it out there. But once again, I so appreciate you being here and I really appreciate the work that has gone into this and look forward to having that discussion here later on today. Thank you so much.
Tracy, may I say to, to, we're going to have an Athabasca Landing Steering Committee meeting, I think, next week.
December fifth.
And so part of that, and this is just a little bit of excitement, we get a new website coming. And I think you're going to be impressed. So hopefully the committee blesses it and, and, and maybe in December, at some point, we can turn this on. We look forward to the county promoting the Athabasca Landing website on your website and giving this thing exposure when it comes out. But I think it's, I think you'll be, you'll like when you see the link to this.
Oh, that's fantastic. That's been another project we've been waiting for, for a very long time. So that's amazing that, that we're getting to the progress stage of actually turning it on. That's fantastic. And just on another note as well, same with the master plan, right? We're, we're working on that one extremely hard as well and updating it. So council will be all given all that information here eventually very soon. So thank you again. Appreciate that.
Thank you for your time today.
Thank you. All right. We'll take a few minutes if we can, everyone, so we can say goodbye. So, and we do have another in closed presentation coming up at eleven. So if we can just take that, those few minutes, we'll go into recess. Thank you so very much. enclosed presentation coming up at eleven. So if we can just take that those few minutes, we'll go into recess. Thank you so very much. We just, I guess we have quorum. So are we have our delegation is here? Yes. So we do need to have a motion, folks, to go into close. Arms are going, councillor Dow, up for bid, right? Councillor Dow like would like to move that we go into closed session. All those in favor. And then we have seen no opposed. So that's five and oh. We're ready. Thank you so very much. We have just come out of closed session and we are moving on to item seven point six, which is the GIS dashboards. It's on page one seventeen of our agenda package. Do you want to move this?
Yeah, ma'am chair, could we move to the another item that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, we can. We will table this one until after lunch. And councillor Hall, are you okay with making the tabling motion? All those in favor? Are there any imposed? Six and oh, thank you. And we will now go to seven point seven grant funding applications, which is on page one thirty two of your agenda package. And I believe that was Mr. Deputy Reed Minz who wanted to discuss.
Yeah, before we move a recommended motion, just to discuss with the administration, do we want to anything to look for for topping up on the Island Lake Regional Water Extension Project? Do we want to not ask for that yet or?
Well, in research with their our grant administrator, we we asked, are we only allowed to ask once? And they said, no. We we could ask twice. They didn't actually say, they said, there's no guarantee either way, even if you ask once. So however, the deadline to hear if we were successful on an increase for twenty six is November thirtieth.
Yeah.
So I guess we're we're kind of between a rock and a hard place. We almost, we we probably should ask for the increase and based on our best estimates. And then if it's still something happens during the design process, we apply again for yeah, so there's no right answer, but not applying is is not a great answer. So we we do want to apply.
Okay, I'll move the recommended motion.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on this item? All right. Okay, Deputy Reed Minz would like to direct administration to apply for Alberta Municipal Water Wastewater Partnership Funding for the following two projects by November thirtieth, twenty twenty five, the Grassland Potable Water Reservoir Upgrades and the Rochester Lift Station Upgrades. And to direct administration to apply for an increase to the Island Lake Regional Water Extension Construction Project Water for Life Grant Number seven zero six nine eight nine. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor. And are there any opposed? Six and oh, thank you. We are on seven point nine of your agenda policy, six one one five mobile devices, page one eighty five of your agenda package. We'll get there. Sorry, there we go. Alrighty, so this is a recommendation here that council adopt the revised policy six one one five mobile device devices as presented. Did administration want to weigh in at all on the on the port? Nope, we're good to go. I think I just have one question on this one. There was a bit of confusion with regards to the definition of term. Is that something that we want to add to the policy? Or do we we're clear that the term is the the four year term for councillors? Everybody's clear on that? Please go ahead.
It's very clear.
You feel it's clear? Okay, we're all good. All right. So we would like to move the motion. Councillor Chams, councillor councillor Chisen would like to move that council adopt revised policy six one one five mobile devices as presented. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? Six and oh, thank you. And we have ten minutes to do the financial variance. Well, not ten minutes, but ten minutes before noon there to give everybody fair time for lunch, but it is item seven point one one and on the page two oh three of your agenda package, which is the financial variance report. And we have Director Dowling here. There we go. Did you want to go ahead or? Please go ahead.
So ma'am chair, we have the variance report for ten months ending October thirty first. Similar to the September variance report, we did a kind of did a summary of the overall departments, some explanations on what we thought was some significant differences. Then you have a summary capital variance and then we just did an investment summary. I will, I will just, I will just say in terms of our forecast, I mean, a forecast is a moving target. So even though we are forecasting, we're just trying our best effort. I mean, things could change, so a forecast could change. But this is based on the feedback we got from our managers, directors. So and plus the forecast here does not include capital.
Okay, thank you very much for that. Does anybody like to begin on the financial variance report? Any questions, comments? You know, you're doing a great job when councillor Hall.
So do you have an expectation that there's a whole load of like this is October thirty one, so it's a month? I mean, it's it's that's pretty good because we're still in November, so we can't have November thirtieth yet. Is there eighteen million dollars worth of payables out there somewhere or invoices that haven't been submitted but have been spent like this point in the year? That seems like a pretty high number.
Through the chair, councillor off. Yes, I will say I am a little worried that maybe some people might be forecasting their budgets and and we're getting short of time, like they might not spend it, but we did double check. My budget officer myself, we went back to our managers and asked, do you really expect to spend this? I guess it's like the information we're provided. I mean, sometimes, yeah, if I took a critical hard look and really question them, maybe they say, well, maybe not. But for counting terms, we have to have this, we're ordering goods and stuff. I mean, we have to follow the accounting standards and this goods got to be on onsite by thirty first. So but you mean, we take the variance at what information we receive and that's what we provide. I mean, there could be some changes. So maybe in the end of November, some things might change, but I'm hoping that what we get, I mean, it's it's not going to be too many changes, but there may be other than capital, which I said is not included in this. I mean, we have the capital summary here, but and there is some projects in that that we're going to be suggesting go move forward to twenty twenty six. But yeah, I mean, basically the information we have to date is what we provided.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Councillor Hall, is there any?
That's it for me. Thanks.
Okay.
Thanks, Doctor.
Appreciate it. I guess just a quick question, anything that in the forecast that's mentioned that it's being deferred maybe to another year or something like that with those funds that are currently allotted to that item, would it then go into a reserve situation? Or is that something that would have to come back to council? Or how would that work?
Specifically for operations, there is no, we don't do, we don't carry forward operation. Operations is one year only. So the only way that it will be allocated, we basically at the end of the year, we have a surplus. I mean, it's up to council then to decide whether or not we're to place the surplus funds in specific reserves. As you're aware, like then in the twenty twenty six budget, we would have to come back with the request for that item if it got deferred. So that's why when you've seen the operations budget, the first or second look at the operations twenty twenty six, there were some items that we included back in the budget because I'll give you an example, like in amendment digitalization was referred to twenty twenty seven. We still would have to bring that back. Capital items is a little bit different. Capital items, we can they can carry forward, but we still need to bring them to council, say that we request them to carry forward.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. Councillor Hall?
Is there a point, and I don't know if this is for the director or the CIO, where it would make sense actually to revise the budget based on new information that we have related to by their expenditures that are going out or reallocation of funds for specific purposes or revenues that, you know, where where we look back and have an expectation that a revenue may change, revenue stream may change, like should we be amending any of this?
Ma'am Chair, if we go back and look at the minutes, there have been times through the year where we've asked for that budget to be changed, where a budget came in, a tender came in over, and we've asked council, can you approve some extra from reserve or somewhere else? So there's probably been three or four amendments this year to the budget as we went along. If you're talking about at year end, well, I mean, year end, it's too late, but we would probably ask council to make emotions motions about how the surplus is to be dealt with. But that'll be dealt with at year end, but it wouldn't really, there's no point in if in amending a budget from the previous year. It's just
Just and I was thinking more if, you know, bad debt came to light or contamination or some other, some other item that would affect our income revenue.
Yep, as things come up, we've been, we've kind of been asking council to amend the budget. So yeah, especially when we need funds. So that's really, we can't spend money we haven't been allocated. So I know we've done that.
Awesome. Thank you. Please go ahead and Director Dally.
Yeah, just to add to CEO Vex, like generally, if we get a big surprise and like say, for example, we're going to get big expenditures, that's going to show a deficit or whatever, we don't, we may not necessarily do a transfer right away or adjust the budget, but I mean, then our financials would end up at the year end, we we'd see a deficit rather say than a surplus. So then technically, instead of transferring money out to specific reserves, we may have to say we have to transfer into the budget. We don't technically transfer as such in because the financials and everything is already completed. But we'd end up with a small surplus. I mean, you cannot, you cannot budget a surplus, but in some instances you can in the end result could be a deficit or a deficit. You can't, I mean, you can't budget for a deficit, but you might end up the year with the deficit if operations are unexpected expenditures. But generally in regards to councillor all this question, you mean, yeah, sometimes throughout the year, there could be adjustments based on expenditures or overreaches in specific contracts that we unexpected. So we could ask for a budget adjustment, you could do a transfer, or we could wait at that. We could just, in some cases, we could just wait at the end of the year and see that there could be other areas where there are surpluses and we just cover it off. Cover it off because the bottom line, we're looking at the bottom line. So we don't do like transfers between departments or anything to cover off.
Awesome. Thank you.
Just following up on the comment and relating back to the CEO's comment. And and maybe, you know, you admin will correct me if I'm off track, but my my view of budget is similar to the CEO said, you can't spend what you haven't been allocated. If you're coming in with a deficit and council hasn't approved it, but someone spent it. For me, someone should lose their job. You can't spend money that you haven't been given. And if your fuel bill doubles and there's a projection along the way or some other thing. Admin needs to be back in front of us saying, we have a problem. Here's how we're going to solve it. It's not just runaway freight train spending and and deal with it around month at year end out of reserves. Reserves are not the safety margin for surprises.
Thank you. Please go ahead.
No, no, you're correct. I mean, I didn't mean that we're going to show a surplus. I mean, and that's why I guess that's the purpose of forecasts. So say throughout the year, we were doing forecasts or like in the last three or four months. If we're expecting or we see a forecast that's forecasting deficit, that's where we would probably come to council and say, okay, it looks like we went over in certain area. Then we would request council, like, can we spend the additional? And that's where you end up with, you could end up, no, you mean, no, no, like, I'm not sorry if I infer that administration is going to spend and not let council know and then up with a deficit. Now, we would hopefully the forecast would tell us this if we're ending up with surplus or deficit. If it looks like there's a deficit, that's when we will probably bring an RFD saying, it looks like in a specific area, we're going to go over. And then that's that's where we talked about that. Sorry. Welcome.
Thank you very much. Deputy Reed Minz?
Yeah, this, you're doing a good job. That's that's what I want to say. It's at least we're on the right side of the we're not in the red, we're in the black. Yeah, so thank you.
Yeah. But I do, I also want to add to that. Thank you for the diligence that's going into keeping an eye on all of the finances as we're going through the year and providing these forecasts and administration across the board is working extremely hard at keeping us informed. And oh, do we have a new question? Okay, I won't end my conversation yet. Go ahead.
Just, yeah, all of a sudden I found it. The very last end of the report, page two sixteen on the graph, all of a sudden all of a sudden the operating account jumps really high. And and is there a reason for that? Could be.
But taxes are due in July. I don't want to steal their thunder, but
Yeah. No, but we 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 extended. So so it looks like everybody went out and paid their taxes anyway because we extended it or what?
Yes.
Through the ma'am chairs, through Deputy Reed Minz. Yes, this year there was an extension on taxes. So you will see typically during the first six, seven months of the year, you will see our operating kind of deplete. Then when our tax notices goes out, people start paying. I mean, a lot of people don't pay till the end, but when we start getting like the tip and then the bank sends their payments, you would see in the last, like when taxes are due shortly after that, you will see like a spike. And then then it's gradual going down again. So that's our taxes. This year, I do believe if members served in right that we did extend our tax deadline for one month. So then we, I think it would used to be August first, I guess, and then July. So this year, I think it was August the third first instead of July third first.
Yeah, October, yeah. Yeah, I believe it was October.
No, that's that's good. I I like the graph. I I do. I just wanted to explain it a little bit better. And thank you very much.
You're good?
Yep.
Okay. Is anybody else? We're all good because I see everybody's tummies. I can hear some rumbling going on here. So we will be breaking for lunch. But once again, thank you. I really appreciate you working with all the departments and all the departments coming forward with the information that you've brought forward to us here today and the diligence going into looking for those cost savings and and explaining it and all of those things. So thank you very much. Appreciate it. I think we have a recommended motion here to receive the October thirty first, twenty twenty five summary operating in capital financial variance report and investment summary as information. Deputy Reed Minz has has put his hand up to own that motion. And if we're ready for ready for the vote, all those in favor. And are there any opposed? Six and oh, thank you very much. And I believe it is now time to break for lunch. If we could return to the table at twelve thirty, that would be great.
All right, we are back in session. I believe we are at seven point one two, the Alberta Hub Skyways Project. The recommendation here is to provide a letter of support to Alberta Hub agreeing to partner with St. Paul County to apply for an Alberta Community.
It's part of order. I think we're at seven point six.
Thank you. I've forgotten about the tabling. Appreciate that. I'm going to make that a little more prevalent next time so I see it. Thank you for that. Seven point six, this is where we're at. This is the GIS dashboards. It's on page one seventeen of your agenda package and we're here for a presentation from administration.
Would you like to go ahead, please? And thank you. Thank you, Council. Reeve Holland. So we just thought that we haven't discussed with council some of the new initiatives that we've been working on with GIS and we thought it would be a good opportunity to share with you some of the things that we're doing to try and use data tracking for our decision-making processes. I'd like to introduce Maureen. She is our GIS technician. And so we've asked her to put a bit of an overview together and kind of give council, you know, a brief insight into some of the things that we've undertaken in 2025.
Awesome. Thank you so very much. Welcome, Maureen.
Right. Thank you. Good afternoon, everybody. Happy to be here, presenting a little bit of information on GIS and all the fun stuff that we did in 2025 here. Okay, so some of you might be wondering what GIS is. So basically, it's a system that creates, manages, analyzes, and maps all types of data. Thank you. Basically, in-house, we have four or five different GIS systems that we use. Catalyst, which you guys all see, it's an external. There's also an internal portal for our planning and development and all. Taxation Officer, all use it, planning and development, sorry, infrastructure, we all use it. MRF is mapping resources and facilities. They GPS track all of our county vehicles in real time so we can see how fast they are going, where they're going, and how long they've been sitting in the same spot. So if there's an issue, we can send someone to the rescue type thing. And with MRF, actually, I forgot to put on here is the CPOs. They use it as well. It ties into their ticketing and tracking systems as well, so. And then I use QGIS and Esri products in the background for any analysis that Director Morton wishes to know. And a couple other examples of GIS that you guys maybe use daily are like Google Maps, the Alberta 511 Road Report, and the Provincial Wildfire app. So you guys are probably already using GIS, but maybe don't even realize it. Okay, so now that we know a little bit more about what GIS does and how we're using it here. Two main types that we use here for spatial analysis and visualization. So a spatial analysis example is Fire Chief Chalope had his summer seasonal go out and GPS water locations for fighting fire, and it looked like we had a good coverage over the county, but once I did a drive time analysis for five and 10 minutes that showed quite a few gaps. So next year, we'll have to go and review and focus on those gaps to sort of reduce cycle time for fire and water. And then dashboards, digital maps and dashboards, obviously, it's just a simple way to see, make data come alive, give you a really clear summary of data in one simple glance, so. Okay. Oh, and then I think I'll just move to the example. So this is an example of exactly what the guys are using in the truck for collecting dust control information. So it's really simple. They're using cell-enabled iPads in the trucks. I think we have two for what I use them for, for dust control and gravel collection. And then Recreation has one as well, or sorry, between the two of us, we have two. Sorry, I'm confused. So various metrics are collected based on what Director Morton wanted to see in his dashboards. So basically, who did it? What ratepayer, or if it's Athabasca County is paying for it, or if it's invoice dust control, the number of cubic liters that are collected, was gravel applied, yes or no? And then it's, if you say yes, then you have to answer how much gravel was used and from what pit. And then obviously, you can map it out. I'm not sure if I'll be able to do that here or not. Yeah. No locations here, but. And then division number, for easy for metrics, I'll show in the dashboard in a bit. Length is calculated automatically as soon as you draw the line. And then we also have to keep track of how much water we take from our water sources, so all that's mapped as well. So how much liters of water, and then from which source? And then you just hit the submit button, and it automatically updates the dust control dashboard, which I'll show here in a second. So all these boxes show a little different metric, I guess. They're called widgets, and if your eyes are anything like mine, sometimes it's hard to see, so you can pop out, and I'll just, this metric just shows how much, how many applicants by division are applying for dust control. So Division One looks like it doesn't have very many, but there's also a lot of stuff that's in voice there. Different oil and gas companies are hauling, so we, they pay out. What else to say? For the map, you can zoom in, zoom out. If you want to see the aerial imagery in the background, you can do that as well. I can change that up, so it's a little easier to see where I are for reference. And then and then because, Madam Chair, you probably want to be interested in what exactly is happening in Division Five. So you can click here and go to Division Five. The map zooms in sort of to that district, and all the metrics will change based on whatever division that you want to look at. And then to reset, you just hit reset button, and it'll take you back to reset.
We sprayed 2.2 million liters?
Correct.
Oh, sure.
So one of the things that, if the cell service was better here, that would be live for us as the checker or the person putting in the information as the dust control is done. When we get to all the applications, we create a layer showing what dust control we're going to do this year. And as it's done, we overlap that with a different color so that we can see where we're at in the program. Now, that would be live if we always had cell service. Unfortunately, the cell service is fairly spotty, so sometimes it doesn't update until we get back to the office at night. But it's, every day I get to see, or anybody in the office gets to see what was completed during the day and But it's, every day I get to see, or anybody in the office gets to see what was completed during the day and kind of semi-live, see how we're progressing.
Yes, sorry, I forgot to mention that. That yes, it's, it could be live, but it's just due to the lack of cell service. Or if we wanted to go to Wi-Fi in all the trucks, then we could get instantaneous results, but. And then the gravel dashboard is the same sort of thing, same sort of metrics. I didn't realize that tons per mile was an actual metric, but Director Morton ensures me it is. So again, tired eyes, you can see where we're hauling from. Long Lake Pit, three-quarter inch is the heaviest hit this year. And then again, too, if you select Division Four, all the metrics will change and Loose Hill Pit is, Loose Hill and Berg, the same pit.
So could I go out and say that we got below average gravel now in Division Four?
No.
It just says that a lot of the gravel had to come from Long Lake is what it means, right? Yeah. Oh, I see what you're saying.
But yeah, so same thing here. You can pop out, zoom in with the map, change base maps if you want, et cetera, et cetera. And then the next one was the GPS sign collection. I had a seasonal this summer and she went around and collected a little slow to drop. GPS, the forty-one hundred signs in the county, or she took forty-one hundred GPS points, sorry, not all were signs. She noted several spots for signs maybe missing. Obviously, she wasn't a subject matter expert on where signs are, so Public Works will have to determine if in fact we do need signs there or not, but. So if I zoom in, so these blue triangle spots are where she noted that the sign wasn't in perfect condition. So if I click on it, it'll pop up with information. And then the pitcher, this one's kind of got some I don't know, paint chips on it, I guess, so maybe she decided that should be maybe replaced, but. And then any other sign as well, we've got pitchers. What type of sign? That one's in pretty good shape. And then if I show here. Signs missing. All the yellow dots are where she felt that there was signs missing. So obviously, it looks like there's a lot. But a lot of them are dead ends down field access route, so maybe you don't need a dead end sign there, but again, she wasn't a SME sign, so it's up to the Public Works Department to determine whether in fact that they will need, but it's a good start, I guess, to, like this corner, it looks like there's no. She thought maybe there should be a checkerboard here because it's a sharp corner and there's currently not, so maybe there should be, but. So I've sent this to, or Public Works now has an app for if they go out and install a sign. They can GPS, GPS the point, take a picture. So at least then, so when I'm updating, I don't have to sort of try and guesstimate where the sign is actually supposed to go. So I can update our catalyst system with that information, with an updated picture and all that good stuff, so.
We did have a master sign, sign book over at Public Works there. I don't know if it's still there or not. Can it be transposed onto here to see if it's reasonably close or?
There's a book that, you know, that is old.
Old school, where you can't download it in. You still have to GPS the points to have it here from digital, but you can definitely compare the two.
Yeah, yeah. Because we used to, like yearly, we'd go around and, and physically look at every sign with that book, eh? So.
Yes, going forward, any rural addresses, rural address signs that we put up, or new signs or replacement signs, they'll GPS with the app. It looks very similar to what the, the sign collection app looked like, so very easy to use. They just used it the other day and he was pretty pumped about it because he didn't have to come in and plug in his phone to my computer so he can download the pictures for me. So it was kind of a bonus. So gravel stockpile, Director Morton talked about this.
I can.
Yeah. So one of the questions I had, or requests I had for Maureen was, well, here's the stockpile sites or gravel pits that we currently have. What's the haul radius? You know, if I wanted to reduce it to a fifteen or ten or twenty-mile haul from each location, what would it look like? What this one indicates, it shows the, the dark circle, I believe, is ten miles and the outer ring is fifteen. Obviously, on the long lake, or sorry, the tower pit on the north side of the river. Ideally, you wouldn't haul back and forth across a restricted bridge if you didn't need to. That's why you're only seeing that blue piece there. Just the cost to haul smaller loads right now because the bridge is restricted. So we took this information and then created the next one, where, where should we have locations additionally added that would reduce the haul distance? So one looks like grassland area would make a big difference. And one up by Island Lake, which is, we've already spoke to you about. And now if you make that, I know Mo doesn't have, Maureen doesn't have it on her screen at the moment, but if we make it twenty miles, oh, she does have it. We can pretty well cover the entire municipality, so. Anyway, it's just some things that, you know, we're using it for, to assist us with our planning and so on, is all we want to show you.
Okay, I noticed Division Five was left out, yes.
Once the bridge is back up to normal, might be able to haul across there, but. And then I built just a simple dashboard too for the spray program for agriculture. Here it just shows where we've sprayed. This is all 2025 stuff. But I can also add all your stuff in, so it shows where year over year. Like I think this is the tower pit where we have to spray to reduce the weeds. So you can see they've sprayed it several times. Not sure if it got pop-ups or not. Yeah, so this one was done 2024. Twenty twenty-four again. And twenty-four, it looked like it sprayed a couple of times in 2024, but so we've just another way of helping Egg Manager determine where we sprayed. Maybe there's an issue or however he wants to use the data essentially, but it's here, easy to see for him. Yep.
I was just wondering, the tractors, the mowers, are they marked down there too, where they spray each year? Not yet, eh?
Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, no, not at this time, but it's on our radar and we're looking into options for it, so.
Perfect. Thank you.
They are on M R F, so we know where they're going. We're just haven't got the tracking data for what sprayed yet.
Yeah, because there's spray width of the, the booms, I guess, is a factor and, but yeah, it's on Ryan and my radar, so we're looking into it for sure, but. And I think that was all I had to show. If anybody had any other questions or?
Yeah, just before we get into the questions, just letting you know that we have the same thing for all the small mowers, like all the cemeteries, everything. We track that where we mow. You know, we know how many acres we're doing and stuff now. We have them all highlighted of where we're mowing. The other thing that Maureen is currently working on is the traffic count, so we currently have 2025 in there and 2018, because we're trying to put the historical, so she'll start it at eighteen and we'll work our way up to 2025. The historical traffic counts aren't as detailed as the stuff that we do in 2025, but there's still value to it. It doesn't separate truck traffic from cars, but it still gives you vehicle movements. So there's still some value to it, so we're going to have all that in there so that we can see the historical trends. But moving forward, the detailed traffic counts that we're undertaking now will provide better information, so. Anyway, yeah, just wanted to give you some insight to what we're working on and yeah, Mo will be happy to answer any questions you might have, or myself.
This is awesome. This is really great to see and I can imagine quite an enhancement to your toolkit, so that's, that's pretty cool stuff. And thank you so much for all the work that you're putting into that. It's, this is huge and, and yeah, I really appreciate that, but I know you're biting at the bit there for the question for Deputy Reeve Vincent.
First thing, culverts. Are we looking at marking down culverts?
Um, yes, currently, we do have a layer in our system for culverts, but again, it's out of date. And we do, now we do have a, a survey for approach inspection, so if there's a culvert that they've known when they're installing the approaches, that I do mark that in our G I S, so it is tracked there with newer pictures and such, but I think Marshall.
So currently, we are, we are tracking and we have a layer for culverts and any new ones that are installed are tracked. It's, we just don't have great historical data. So at some point, you know, in the near future, we'll do the same thing we did with the signs. Probably have a seasonal go out and pick up all the historical culverts locations. But yeah, we haven't started there yet, but I think made great progress in 2025 and we're just starting to, you know, use it for, it is extremely powerful tool that we're just scratching the surface on, so.
I, I want to thank you very much for moving this ahead the way you have because, again, with, I used to work here and I used to listen to the, to the discussions on G I S and how powerful it can be and how great it was, the whole system was going to be and all this stuff and, and it and it, and it worked. It worked a little bit, eh? But there was never the, the information gathering that, that I see that is going on now, so. Great job. And then watching this move forward is very exciting. So thank you.
Anybody else? Please go ahead, Councilor Hall.
I think it's great that we're actually, I heard the words using data to make decisions. So giant leap ahead and I'm glad for that. Can you have time to share with us a couple of things about how you might use data to both maybe monitor resource utilization? So do we compare fuel use over our greater fleet between items versus miles to drive and idle time and all of that? Like, are you able to, to use the information you gather to be more efficient in how we extend the life of this equipment because, for that? And then collateral to that, can the operators on things like graders access the data to report both problems with roads or stuff in the ditch that needs attention, like trees down, signs missing, or even to mark off when they've done a snow plowing visit the yard? Do the, do those guys have access to this, even without cell coverage continuously?
The short answer is that some of that is available. Unfortunately, the, the technology isn't readily available. I guess it is. It just depends how much you want to spend. Years, and we're not set up that way yet, but one of the things we used to do at another municipality where I worked was, you would determine every week what you want to collect. So, you know, or, you know, I'd say, okay, you know, you push it twice for a downed tree or you push the button, and it was just a hot button in the grader. But if you wanted to say, we're going to pick up culvert locations this week, everybody knew, every time they went by a culvert, they would hit the hot button and it gives us a GPS, GPS point of where the culvert was. That kind of technology has been around for a while. We don't have those hot buttons in our graders at this time. And that was a different, but it's available. You, it's just how much do you want to spend and how far do you want to go? You can go right to the point where we can have tablets in the trucks and identify, you know, how many, how many tones they put on, which pit. It can all be tracked and even in the trucks and the graders. It's fairly expensive and I'm not sure if the value is there for that type of money when we can we can ask them to identify that stuff, be more diligent in saying, okay, today, like, we want everybody to report downed trees or downed signs and, and we need to enforce that and that becomes more of a management solution than spending all the money on the technology, because some of that technology is very expensive. But as far as using GPS information and, and G I S to track efficiencies, absolutely. That's one of the things that C A O Beck has kind of tasked me with is trying to evaluate the overall efficiency of our greater beats and how they're laid out and, you know, we, we kind of know that coming from town isn't efficient. In a lot of cases, there's a lot of travel time, but greater sheds are expensive. So those things will be evaluated moving forward. So yeah, we can use this to help us sort some of that, for sure.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Anybody else have any questions, comments? I think, are we ready to go? I think so. All right. Wasn't sure.
So Maureen, you said you use Esri and we use Catalysts. Now, some places, because Esri does, like Catalyst is sort of more of an Alberta-based thing and Esri does a lot of the same stuff, I think. Is there a reason we, we use both versus consolidating into one provider?
Catalyst is actually worldwide, I believe. They are very good at presenting data for non-technical people, so you can click on it and it'll pop up with the information that you need. But if you wanted to do analysis, like how many residences are within 200 meters of Highway Two, it would be very difficult to do that in Catalyst because you'd have to measure and count each one individually. Or in Esri, I can do that in five minutes or less. Um, no. They, um, the Catalyst uses Q G I S in the background, a post-dress system. I can't really connect to it with the Esri stuff, so I have to go in and download monthly. So like the cadaster layers updated monthly from Atholus to Catalyst and then I'll download it if I need to print maps off. So that's kind of a little bit of a pain, but for any mapping, Catalyst, you can make a map, but it's pretty much just a screenshot. You can't do any fancy fun stuff, I guess I should say. It's just a lot easier to use.
I'll say, from a user experience, I find, yeah, Catalyst far more user-friendly, but I
Yeah.
I was surprised because I know Esri's in the background and for, for other places and that we, that we actually deployed that as well.
Yeah, some municipalities just use Esri. They've built the whole system up themselves and done it that way, but you'd probably need at least one more G I S person to manage that for a county this size, for sure, so. But yeah, Catalyst is a very good tool for what the planning and building people need in infrastructure and it houses like a lot of our data very well. It's just, it's not good for doing a lot of analysis with, so.
Thank you.
Awesome. Okay, anybody else bring anything forward? I think we're good to go. Once again, thank you very much. This is great. And it's really neat to see that and it's also really great for our public to see that. So I really appreciate you bringing it forward. That's fantastic and well done, well done. Thank you. So the motion I think we have for this is to receive the presentation as information. Councilor Chamzick would like to go ahead and receive the presentation as information. All those in favor? I see no opposed and that will be six and oh. Thank you very much. And now we can move to seven point one two. I apologize for that. Seven point one two, which is on page two seventeen of our agenda package. This is the Alberta Hub Skyways Project. The recommendation here is to provide a letter of support to Alberta Hub agreeing to partner with St. Paul County to apply for an Alberta. agreeing to partner with St. Paul County to apply for an Alberta Community Partnership Grant to deliver the outcomes of the Alberta Hub Skyways Project. Um, more than anything, I think it's really, uh, interesting to know, or people are unaware of what the Alberta Hub Skyways Project is. Um, in our discussion on the report, just briefly, um, it's a project that is laying the groundwork to develop a drone friendly ecosystem to enable advanced air mobility activities such as beyond visual line of sight, drone operations for drone based delivery of goods, precision agricultural, agriculture using drones and support infrastructure development for electric aviation. So it's really neat advancement that that's going through and I'm, I'm hoping maybe, uh, you know, I'm pretty sure our airport can also, uh, operate in such ways. So something maybe the council would be considering in the future. Um, for discussion. Um, does anybody have, please go ahead, councillor Chamsik?
I agree with you. I only know of, uh, one place within the county that is actually a drone authorized dealer. And the discussions when I went to a presentation was the outer site, uh, flying and so on and so forth. Be awesome to see within our boundaries as well.
Right? Yeah. I, I think this is, you know, again, future forward thinking and, and, um, the technology as it continues to advance, we get to try and keep up with it as well. Is there any conversation or comments on this one? Uh, recommended motion? Councillor Chisen, as recommended, um, once again, that's to provide a letter of support to Alberta Hub agreeing to partner with St. Paul County to apply for an Alberta Community Partnership Grant to deliver the outcome of the Alberta Hub Skyways Project. If we're ready for the vote, all those in favor? Are there any opposed? Six and oh, thank you very much.
Just, do we know why that was on the, on the agenda then? Presumably somebody put it on to make.
It was just like I said, just to discuss it and highlight it for, not only for our public, but, uh, just for future food for thought. Item seven point one three is the local and composite assessment review board, uh, decisions on page two twenty to two twenty two forty eight, pardon me, of your agenda. And I believe councillor Hall, you have requested for this one.
I, I put it on again, just to, uh, ask administration if there's any decisions that they're aware of that would warrant appeal from a, their ability to influence future decisions and the other decisions in the future.
Madam Chair, I can't comment on that. I, since I'm not the decision maker of the board, I, I don't know how it would affect cer- uh, future decisions.
Thank you. Is there any further comment or discussion? Oh, your microphone.
Sorry, I touched it. Um, I moved the same motion as last time to direct admin to consult with the county assessor to determine if any of the decisions warrant an appeal. And the reason for doing that is it's not out of the realm of possibility. The assessment review boards make mistakes. We've seen that in the past. And it hurts us nothing to ask if any of these things create a problem that we need to deal with. Um, I, I don't have any that I can identify, but that's not my area of expertise. And I just think it's, uh, useful to ask, do any of, are any of these, are all these sound, sound logical decisions? We've had, uh, not everyone at the table will be aware in the, in the last five years, the county did take some to the court of kings, queens and kings bench to have appealed because they were, they were legally flawed and, uh, they have an impact on the tax base. So I think it's a good decision to just ask the assessor that question.
And, and if I may, if you could please repeat your motion, um, slowly so that we can all get it down.
It's identical to the last one.
Pardon me? Did you get it? Would you mind?
It's identical to the, uh, the one last time.
Would you mind going ahead? Please, Ms. Blair, to read that back.
Moved by councillor Hall to direct administration to consult with the county assessor to ter- to determine if any of these decisions warrant an appeal.
Thank you. Is there any comment on this? Any discussion? Go ahead, please, Deputy Reev Minz.
Does, does administration like, like, administration talks to our, our assessors all the time, right? And not like, like, do you think the assessors would reach out to you and say, this, this should be looked at or this doesn't look right or?
Yep. I suspect they would.
Yeah, like, like, especially being a new assessor that, 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 you know, they'd want to, to me, they'd want to actually uh, give a good reason why this was changed or something like that.
Madam Chair, I did spend some time with our assessor at the convention. He was there for a different reason. And, um, he raised no concerns about needing to appeal anything. But I didn't ask him about these three specific appeals. So if that's the motion that council wants me to pursue, then I can ask him about these three specific appeals.
Thank you. And, and I'll just comment as well. I mean, we appoint these members to the assessment review board and, um, I have faith that they are doing a great job. So, um, I will be not in support of this particular motion. Are we ready for the vote?
Yeah, we'll make it recorded.
Uh, we can't, we would like a recorded vote on this. So I will ask that everyone hold their hand a little higher so that, um, I'm able to take the names down properly. And if we're ready for the vote, and I'm assuming everybody is comfortable with the motion that was read, or would you like it read again?
I'd like it read again.
Okay, thank you. Please, Ms. Blair, if you don't mind.
Moved by councillor Hall to direct administration to consult with the county assessor to determine if any of these decisions warrant an appeal.
Okay. Are you ready for the vote or do you have any questions? Okay, we're ready for the vote. All those in favor? We have councillor Hall. Are there any opposed? We have councillor Dowlett, councillor Chisen, councillor Chamsik, Reeve Holland and deputy Reeve Minz. The motion fails. Do we have a motion that, uh, council receives, uh, the report for information? Councillor Dowlett? To go ahead and receive this report for information, if we're ready for the vote, all those in favor? We have five and are there any opposed? One, six, one. Thank you. All right. And we are, uh, moving on to item seven point one six, which is page two fifty three of your agenda package. This was our earlier presentation from the Athabasca Landing Trail Steering Committee. And I believe, um, the recommendation here is that council provide administration with direction. I would like to propose that we postpone, uh, this particular item until after the Athabasca Landing Trail Steering Committee meeting on the fifth, as well as further consultation with, uh, landowners. And if there's any, does anybody have any further?
Makes sense.
Okay. If we're ready for the vote, all those in favor? Oh, go ahead. Sure. Uh, to postpone this item until after the Athabasca Landing Trail Steering Committee meeting on December fifth. And that there has been further consultation with the landowners. And that would be done through Alberta Trailnet and the steering committee, that, that consultation. Okay. If everybody's ready to go for the vote, all those in favor? Are there any opposed? Thank you. Six and oh. We are moving to eight point one A, which is a community events calendar, and that is on page two fifty six of your agenda package. And I believe I'll start with one quick one on twenty ninth, which is coming up here in November. Amber Valley is hosting a garage rummage, rummage sale from ten to four. I believe it's $10 a table, if I'm not mistaken. And they're also offering chili and a bun for five, for $5. So there is that one to add. Is there anybody else? Go ahead, please, councillor Chamsik.
On, uh, December fourth is the Grassline Christmas Concert. And then on the twelfth is a Prospida Christmas Dinner and Dance.
Prospida. Christmas Dinner and Dance. Okay. Anybody else? Go ahead, please, deputy.
December eighteenth, and I know we're going to discuss this later on. Also, uh, All Saints Anglican Church in Athabasca has a, uh, Lessons and Carols presentation at seven PM.
Okay. Thank you. Seven PM. Anybody else? Councillor Chamsik, would you like to receive the calendars as discussed?
I sure do.
Thank you very much. We're ready for the vote. All those in favor? Thank you. Are there any opposed? Six and oh, thank you. We are going to eight point two meeting calendars on page two sixty one of your package. Um, I have a few here to mention, so we'll, if that's okay, we can start on those. Um, just for, uh, people's information, the November twenty seventh, which is today, the Regional Collaboration Committee has, is going to be rescheduled with a date to be determined. Um, I understand that the multiplex has moved to December second at nine thirty AM. On December fourth, um, and I, I was probably somewhere else, but we've all been invited to the Athabasca Community Christmas Supper. That's at four PM. Um, no, again, on the fourth, the community transportation, there will be a meeting there at two PM. And on the fifth, um, are we still scheduling for the, uh, bridge announcement? So far, so good. Okay. And there's also an Athabasca Landing Trail, uh, Steering Committee at nine thirty AM uh, in Edmonton or, uh, via Zoom.
Madam Chair, just on the, on the fifth, um, the bridge announcement, the minister will be here. It'll be at the county office.
Okay.
So they've confirmed and we've invited LPAC and the MLA, I believe. So there'll be an announcement in the foyer of.
Oh, fantastic. Okay.
No. Well, you can if you want, but there won't be anybody there.
And it's still at ten thirty, correct?
Yeah, the press will be here.
And, and, and ten thirty. There we go. Awesome. Thank you. Um, I believe the FCSS meeting has been canceled on December eighth and the next one will be on, uh, the twelfth of January for FCSS. And, um, I just registered for the watershed and, uh, WPA CS's one-on-one webinar for the tenth. Um, the Alice B Donahue Library is December eleventh. They have, uh, for, uh, Ms. Blair's knowledge there, um, every second Thursday of the month for them, for Alice B Donahue.
I had discussions with them after sending out the committee appointments and they noted that they were not having a December meeting.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Perfect. Um, then on the sixteenth, we are going to replace the committee of the whole meeting with a special meeting. And we will be adding a special meeting on the eighteenth. And as well on the eighteenth that evening, um, as you mentioned, the Lessons and Carols for the All Saints Anglican Church. I've been invited to be a reader there at seven PM. And January, again, I guess it would be the second Thursday there for the, uh, on the eighth of January for the Athabasca Library, Alice B Donahue, uh, Board Meeting. And that's what I have. And councillor Chamsik?
Uh, ASB, December seventeenth. And then in January, um, if I am correct, the ASB conference will be from the twentieth to the twenty second, which, you know, is unfortunately a busy week for us. And then on the twenty eighth is the IMC meeting for Boyle.
Twenty eight. And the time for the ASB on the seventeenth of December?
On nine thirty.
Nine thirty? Go with that. Okay. The ASB Conference and the IMC meeting is in Boyle or here?
It's here.
Here. Chambers. And that's at nine thirty?
Right.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Madam Chair, um, we, uh, polled our, uh, intermunicipal partners, the town and village about a potential planning one-on-one course, um, for elected officials. Um, and if there was a date that might work for them in January and they picked, uh, January fifteenth, is that correct? Uh, so it'd be during the day. We haven't picked a venue yet, I don't believe. But does it seem like it would work for council? And if so, then we would confirm with everyone that it could work. I think it's not mandatory training, but it's really good. I mean, council is, most of council is back on the municipal planning commission. It might, might be helpful to learn more about the act again.
Okay. So that's the third Thursday, January fifteenth. Uh, I'm available. How's everybody else looking?
Yeah.
Good. Councillor Hall?
Is this an EO EP course or something that's being?
It is not. It is, uh, in addition to what you might learn at EO EP, it's a bit more in-depth that be all day, just on planning, just on the MGA, uh, MGA and how it applies to planning and what we do.
Nice.
Yeah. Madam Chair, it'll be nine. We don't know where the location is. We, before we did any of that, we would confirm whether or not council was okay with that date.
Thank you. So far, so good. Okay. I remember it looks like everything's good on, for the six of us. Uh, we're missing three, but, uh, we can sort that out. Um, here shortly, I hope. Um, do you have anything else, Deputy Reev Minz?
Not right.
You're good, councillor Hall?
Move to receive the calendars as, uh, amended.
As discussed. All right. Is everybody good to go for the vote? I believe so. So councillor Hall would like to receive the, uh, calendars as, uh, discussed. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? We're good to go. Six and oh. We have item, uh, nine point one that was added here today. Uh, I just have to find that one with me. It is a letter and I will turn this over to CAO Beck. This is a letter for the Divided Highway Speed Limit Survey, Transportation and Economic Court.
Madam Chair, you added it. I thought you would lead it. I really, it was sent up to me, but they're consulting on whether or not, uh, uh, what everyone's feelings are on adjusting the, uh, speeds on sixty-three in our community.
Thank you for that. Um, I believe they're asking for, there is a survey that is for public opinion that can be, um, added, but are they, I believe they're asking as well for municipal input on this. Um, I might not be popular here in my personal opinion on raising the speeds. Um, I do have, and I'll just start the, the conversation, uh, safety concerns for increasing the speeds, uh, economic and environmental impacts, uh, as well as infrastructure and resource strain. So I'll just run in through a few of the bullets that, um, that I have for concerns on, uh, for safety and, uh, concerns for increasing those speeds from, what is it? One ten, I think it is to one twenty. Um, higher speeds directly correlate, of course, with severe crash outcomes, uh, because more kinetic energy is involved, as we know. Um, so studies suggest that a small increase in speed limits can lead to significant increases in fatal collisions. And there is an estimated thirty-six percent rise, uh, according to one expert, um, on that. Longer stopping distances, faster speeds, uh, require a greater distance for a vehicle to stop, reducing driver reaction time and increasing the likelihood of a collision. There's the speed differential differential, the difference in speed between passenger vehicles and slower moving transport trucks or RVs could increase, making lane changes and merging maneuvers more hazardous. Uh, the driver behavior, there's concern that if the limit is raised to one twenty, drivers will feel emboldened, emboldened to drive even faster, the one forty to one fifty, creating a moving target for speed enforcement. And the eighty-fifth percentile speed used in road design, uh, road conditions, again, higher limits are less appropriate for non-ideal conditions such as winter ice and black ice wildlife activity, which we all know was reported here. I believe it was last year was over three hundred wildlife strikes alone, uh, in, in their north. Um, also heavy traffic density is a concern with the higher limits, uh, which is common in Alberta. Um, well, I'll move to the economic and environmental impacts. There's higher insurance premiums could be a concern as we see an increase in, in crash severity and frequency. Um, that also would lead to higher insure- injury payouts and more total vehicle losses for insurance insurers, which would likely result in higher auto insurance premiums for Albertans, where we all know we already pay a high rate, uh, compared to the rest of the country. Um, and then we look into the increased fuel consumption where most vehicles, uh, are most fuel efficient when traveling between fifty and eighty. At one twenty, a vehicle can be used, uh, can use about twenty percent more fuel than at a hundred kilometers per hour, per hour. And then that leads to higher emissions. Uh, so increased fuel consumption directly translates to a rise in greenhouse gas emissions, which goes against our climate crisis efforts. And my very last few points are the infrastructure and resources strain, which is near, near, very near and dear to my heart, strain on emergency services, especially in, in Highway sixty-three is a perfect example, being so remote. Um, but the Calgary Firefighters Association has raised concerns that increased speeding puts an unnecessary strain on emergency resources. Uh, and we all know our resources are mainly volunteer based in our area and Highway sixty-three is one of those that it concerns me the most. And then we have lessons from BC, um, the British Columbia raised their speed limits on some highways in twenty. And then we have lessons from B C. The British Columbia raised their speed limits on some highways in two thousand and fourteen. Only to roll them back many of the changes after a significant increase in serious and fatal crashes. So I don't know if you guessed, but I'm kind of against this. But go ahead, please, Counselor Chamsik.
Well, you're not the only one. I personally am strongly opposed. I'm not going to say it as eloquently as you just did. You know, there is all those concerns, especially when it comes to safety, our first responders, the effects on our fire departments. But also even with companies that have already had pre-governed vehicles and disruption of the flow of traffic. Lead to exactly what you said, ninety percent of those safety issues as well.
Thank you. Counselor Dowlett?
Well, yeah, same here. I, I agree, you know, if there wasn't for the sensitive loads on Highway sixty-three, I'd probably go with the one twenty, but. You know, you got the fuel, you got the chemicals and a lot of heavy traffic. I, I don't, I really don't think it would be wise. I'd oppose that.
Okay. Anybody else?
I do want to say I did take the survey and I did find value in making sure that you do it. So if possible, please do.
Thank you. Anyone else? So is there an appetite here? It says here in the letter, as a valued stakeholder, I ask you to consider the proposal outlined in this letter and provide your feedback no later than December twelfth. There's, of course, the online survey is there. Or we're also mentioned to provide a direct response by email. Is there. Comfort in the room to ask administration to provide our feedback? In, by, via email before December twelfth? Please go ahead.
I think it's a great idea.
Thank you. So we would like to put a motion forward to direct administration to provide feedback as discussed today. Via email to the, where are we at here? To Paul Smith, the deputy minister, as requested in their November nineteenth letter.
Should we also include our two MLAs with that as well?
CCing to our MLAs? Sounds good. Anyone else have any input there? Are you okay with that, Ms. Blair? I didn't even have it written down, so this will be fun. To direct administration to provide feedback as discussed via email no later than December twelfth. To Paul Smith, Deputy Minister, as requested in their November nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five letter. And to CC both our MLAs in the email. Good, good to go. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? Are there any opposed? Thank you, six and oh. And I believe this brings us now to our closed session items. Deputy Rehman's is putting, reports the motion that we go into closed. All those in favor? And I see no opposed, so that will be six and oh. Thank you very much. We are back from our enclosed session and we have one motion coming out. And that motion would be that Counselor Dowlett would like to direct administration to proceed with negotiations for the purchase of property discussed. And if there's no further discussion, all those in favor? And I don't see any opposed, so that would be five and oh. And if we, go ahead, please, if. I think we're ready to call today the day. And so I will adjourn this meeting at two forty-three.